I will go ahead and call to order our July 24, 2025 Longview City Council meeting. First thing on our agenda is our prayer and pledge led by Gary Ford. Gary is the owner of Wooly G's Bike and Fitness located in downtown Longview. They host a number of activities specifically for our Healthy View initiatives. We want to thank them for their participation. I think you might be missing a bike ride right now, so thanks for being here. If you would, please stand and we'll join Gary in the prayer and pledge.
Bow your heads with me, please. Dear Heavenly Father, I want to thank you for the city of Longview, a place that I've been blessed to call home for the majority of my life. I want to thank you for the city staff, council, and our mayor that have chosen to serve our community. I pray that you give them wisdom and discernment as they carry out the duties entrusted to them. May each decision they make reflect fairness, compassion, and integrity, always seeking the greater good. Help us all to listen with open hearts and to speak with kindness. May we remain ever mindful of those in need, and may our works bring peace, prosperity, and unity to our city. Grant us the clarity to lead, the humility to serve, and the perseverance to make lasting change. Ask all these things in your son's precious and holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Gary. We have a number of fun and exciting proclamations to start with tonight. First, I would like to ask the Spring Hill baseball team and coaches to join us up here in the front along with Councilman Barry Hill. After we've celebrated them and done their proclamation, we will ask all of you Spring Hill fans to come up and take a photo, but for right now, we're just doing team and coaches. Come on up. Congratulations. I know nobody thought to bring a t-shirt, but I was glad to do that.
If everybody can hear me, I'll speak like this. I'm kind of like Coach Medman. I always used to be a coach, and so I can talk loud. Got to have the mic. I'm sorry. All right. I can't do what you do. First off, it's an honor for me to recognize not only the Spring Hill Panthers, but Coach Medman, because I'm going to tell you something that I know from this guy right here, is every one of these boys that are on this platform tonight and that are in his program are boys with high integrity, young men. I'm sorry, let me get that right. Young men full of integrity, because he demands the best, he expects the best, and this year, Spring Hill Panthers was the best. Thirty-five and seven, that's pretty awesome. Bringing home that state championship was even better, and I just can't say enough about this man. He's a good Christian man, his integrity, his family. Daughter baptized this summer while at the beach. I keep up with him. That's the third one, all on the right track, and I promise you, you leave these boys in his hands, and it's going to be the same way. Spring Hill, you've got a winner here, and you've got a bunch of winners on the stage. Congratulations to Spring Hill.
Thank you all. The support, not just from Spring Hill, we appreciate our community and the support, but just for the overwhelming support from the city of Longview and people from the past and present, current, keeping up with us and congratulating, whether they were from Longview or Hallsville or Pine Tree or anywhere. It's been overwhelming, it's been awesome, and we're super appreciative of the support from the Longview community, so thank you all.
It is now my honor and privilege by proclamation to recognize today, July 24, 2025, as Spring Hill Baseball Day in the city of Longview. The Spring Hill Panthers baseball team capped off their dominant 2025 season by taking home their first state championship title in program history, defeating Wembley five to three in the 4A D2 Championship. Thirty-five, oh, thank you, correcting, thank you, concluding their season with a solid thirty-five to seven record, including a perfect fourteen and oh record in divisional play. And honest, too, integrity and honest. Now therefore, I, mayor of the city of Longview, Texas, do hereby proclaim today as Spring Hill Baseball Day in the city of Longview. Congratulations.
All get to squeeze in as much as you can.
Okay, we're Spring Hill Panthers here, come on up, take a good photo.
Whatever you want to do.
Is everybody in there if we do?
Yes, I got everyone. We're saying Panthers on three, all right? One, two, three.
Way to go, Barry Hill.
Way to go, lady.
Next on our agenda is a proclamation recognizing July 10 as 1919 Longview Remembrance Day. If the members of that project would come on up and join me up here. I've asked, well, I'm going to ask Clint to say a couple of things to us, and then I will read the proclamation if you just want to give us a little. Whatever you want to say.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for the opportunity. So this is not the full team, but this is a collection of diverse professionals from educators, engineers, entrepreneurs, writers, authors, who decided five and a half years ago to come together with a collective conviction, honestly, just to bring the truth to light. And so we recognize that as a community, we don't always do the best with having these conversations about, I guess, the darker parts of our history, and so we wanted to simply bring the truth to light concerning the 1919 Longview Race Riot that took place, I mean, hundreds of feet from where we're standing today. And so this team has two goals, at least in the initial phase of our project. It's the historical marker, which has gone through the Texas Historical Commission, has come back and been approved by the county commissioners unanimously, and later this year will be erected in front of the courthouse. And then it's our documentary that is in post-production. We have identified an award-winning, renowned film director, Chris Lamarc out of Houston, who is doing a phenomenal job, so please connect with us on Facebook and just follow along, and you'll see when those things are coming out, and just help us. Really, I think the simplest way to say, our goal is to remember and to remember these events properly, and not be ashamed, or to be ashamed, but still know how to have joy in the midst of these difficult conversations. So we're glad to be here. Thank you so much for this opportunity, and we hope you all will join us.
Thank you so much, and thank you guys for all that you're doing. It's very important, and so it is my honor to proclaim that July 10, 2025, as 1919 Longview Remembrance Day here in the city of Longview, whereas on July 10 of 1919, during the period known as the Red Summer, racial violence erupted in Longview, Texas, resulting in the destruction of black homes and businesses, the loss of precious life, and widespread terror and trauma across the black community. Whereas this chapter of our city's history has remained too long in the shadows, leaving generations without public recognition or healing, and whereas the 1919 Longview Remembrance Project seeks to recover and uplift this history, honor those harmed, and foster reconciliation through truth-telling, education, and community remembrance. And whereas healing begins with honesty and remembrance is both an act of justice and a step towards building a more compassionate, united, and equitable Longview. It is now therefore my privilege as the mayor of the city of Longview to proclaim the day of July 10, 2025, as 1919 Longview Remembrance Day in the city of Longview. Thank you, guys. I'm probably going to take a photo, so don't run away. Hey, how are you? You made it. Next on our agenda, I will bump till a later time, but we'll come back to recognizing our Longview resident for an act of bravery as soon as he is able to join us. So next on our agenda is citizen comment. I have a handful of speaker cards. I will start with Jim Kistner.
My name is James Kistner. I'm a retired engineer who 14 years ago got into home repair and renovation, and 10 years ago got into artistry, so now I'm an artist. And with what this state and our governor has gone through in the last few years, there've been some really tough times, and I thought I would honor him and the first lady with a piece of art, basically portrait of the governor and the first lady. And I have finished it, except for a little tag down at the bottom, and I thought, you know, it would be better if this came from somebody other than an unknown artist, somebody like a mayor, or general manager, or you. So I wanted to lay that out for you, to see if you wanted to be involved in that, because maybe it could come from this council, and I could put that on the tag at the bottom, and then find a time to present it to the governor, and of course, if any of you are down there at the same time, you could be there with me. And I think this would be a great tribute to the governor and the first lady. I can read to you what's on the tags right there, next to their portrait. To the first lady, it says, Celia Phelan Abbott, first lady of Texas, an appreciation from the citizens of Texas for her tireless efforts in support of the Texas Department of Family and Protective Services, and her partnership with the governor's team to end human trafficking. And for the governor, I have Gregory Wayne Abbott, governor of Texas, an appreciation for a man of integrity and vision, the leader who guided Texas through a time of crisis, bringing attention to and finding solutions for the protection of our state from the invasion of our borders. And then I could put a tag down at the bottom, that it's from the city council of Longview, or whatever you decide, if you decide to do that. If there's any comments, I'll take those down right after.
Thank you, Mr. Kistner. We're actually not supposed to give you comments now, but we'll be glad to have someone reach out to you afterwards. I appreciate your artistic ability and your sentiment. Very, very kind.
Okay, you have my information. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, sir. Next up is Mandel Stoker.
Let's thank the council, city council, the mayor, and the leaders, and kind of piggyback, I guess, off the 1919 Remembrance Committee, they did a fine job, and they continue to do a good job. They worked diligently to get the marker for the 1919 Race Riot. So I'm going to read mine. I started back in, around 1989, I started my research, and I did a documentary of Luton Eternal University back in '09, Terrell Edwards, he kept begging me to do it, and well, I did it, and they accepted it. And then, as see, I would publish a novel, the one I gave you, the book, on the cover, the romantic part of it, yes, in 2013, then we did a play, Nomad Production. Payco is now, I didn't know, everybody knew, I didn't know Payco, Ethan Parker, Nomad Production. They, we would do a play, and we did a play several times, in Glawater, Texas, we did it in Tatum, Texas, and we did a short film. I did a short film in 2017, I believe, 2017, it's on YouTube, you can go there and watch it, it's about 10 minutes. And we've also been in a couple of film festivals, on the street port in Austin, Texas, and again, I just want to thank the mayor and our leadership, because we had great leadership back 106 years ago, in 1919. Gabriel Augusta, he was the mayor, he was a good leader, he made good decisions, like you all are making today, everyone on this table, this council. Thank you so much. And for the committee, Remembrance Committee, want to thank them as well for carrying this thing on. I want to thank you for that. Thank you again.
Thank you. Next card I have is for Stephen Thacker.
Good afternoon. Madam Mayor, council members, Mr. Rowland. I'm up here for a second time. Really, this time I want to, it's twofold. Number one, for those of you who don't remember me, I live at 2 Camden Court, there's 2, 3, and 4 of Camden Court. We are continually getting flooded. The water's coming from the poor infrastructure from behind us, blocked up, pipes, drains, and so forth. We're flooded to the point where our houses are now uninsurable, they're, they're really shouldn't be lived in, but we have no other place to go. I mean, black mold is evident, but the reason I'm here is, one, to thank you for the quick action and everything that you are doing, number one, and that goes for the people that are, that are, we're sitting at the table whenever we discussed. And number two, I really, really, really hope, and I really, we really want to get in front of you again to just plead for a buyout. I mean, that's the only thing we can do. We can walk away from our homes that are on the tax rolls for 300,000 apiece, or we can walk away from that and foreclose on it, let it go. That's our choices. And I know you are doing your budget right now, and we were hoping to get in here before you finalized your budget, so we can hopefully get this taken care of now, not next year. I mean, it's affecting our home life. Haven't seen my granddaughters in a while, they can't come over to the house. It's that damaged. Concrete floors instead of hardwood, all the floors are taken up. You know, we have no walls. Can't really rebuild because just that little rain we had a week ago, it pushed eight-inch by 24-foot water barriers. The little bit of water we had coming across from Fox Lane pushed those, if they hadn't have been there, probably would have got water in my house again. So I'm just pleading with the city council, for myself, for the owner of 3 and 4 Camden Court, please do what's right and buy our homes, so we can move on. We're not asking for, we're not asking to get rich off of anything. All we want is what makes us whole again, so we can move on and find another house. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thacker. Next comment card I have is from Larry James Smith.
Good evening. My name is Larry James Smith. I reside at 2306 Nixon Drive. Before I begin, please bow your heads with me. Heavenly Father, give me the words to speak kind, to speak with empathy, to speak with truth, and Heavenly Father, most of all, cleanse my heart, renew my mind, give me the wisdom and knowledge to do your good works. Amen.
Amen.
I'd like to apologize to Ms. Sharon Moore publicly. I attested you, and I won't give you the results. I came at you in attack mode, and you came back with the same attack to justify your means. I apologize. I respect you, especially if you're in a position, and I'm going to support you. Without a doubt, I did not agree with the pool, but I was asked to support you, and I said, yes, I was supported because of her endeavor. I didn't have long to do it, so I went to AI. I put into AI what I thought about what needs to be done in south part of Longview as far as swimming pools, and how it would benefit people that look like me to learn how to swim. I know how to swim, pretty good. I don't claim to be an Olympic person, but that's beyond this. The next thing, Ms. Moore, you mentioned God. God will never put anything on you. You choose to do it, and you choose to do it, and you pray that God will help you through it. I turned 79 on the 6th of August. I figured that if I went at you in a very pursuing way, you would come back with a little empathy and understand my passion. I sent everybody an invitation that I wanted to do to event in Longview. I hope that you received it. I need your blessings in order to put this through, before I send the letter to Steve Harvey and say, look, the city of Longview is behind you, or they are not only behind you being here, they're behind me. I need a response before I send that final letter to him, because I'd like to have the event held here at my Amado Luton Eternal University. It's a bigger space, and it can be done. I was there with Dak Pressett when he represented the YMCA. I got pictures of that. So all I'm asking is that let me know whether or not you will embrace me inviting Steve Harvey here to put on a family feud, and having the police department, the fire department, the council, and anyone from the neighborhood who would like to participate in the family feud. Please let me know. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, if you would, would you get with Lily back there? We do have some council rules about personally addressing our council members. I don't think you stepped over the line tonight, but for future, I'd love for you to have a copy of those rules if you wouldn't mind to get that.
I appreciate that.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Next comment card I have is Ms. Brenda Woolridge.
Good evening, everyone. I'm not that tall, y'all. Thank you. Like I said, my name is Brenda Woolridge. I live at 2217 South 13th Street, and number one, I want to say this first, I applaud Mr. Ackerman, I lost my mind, Mr. Mcfee, and all those that helped with that building down there, it's going along, and it's looking good. And my second thing that I wanted to address was, on the south side of town, there are some apartments that have been there for, I know, over 50 years, and the city code people have been trying to work with this man, or Mr. Doc Vaughn, that owns them, and they are, it's awful. The ditches are inside the yards, trash is everywhere, the code people pick it up, and it's right back, you know, and, but they don't have anywhere else to go, and he won't fix up the place. So they're in a bad position, and I'm just going to encourage the city, the code, the city, rather, to help the code people on the south side, because like I said before, it's an old place. South side is very old. I've been there 50 years. So it's not, those few people that they have to work with is not going to get it. And they are very good people, and they're doing the best they can, and I have one suggestion, that's all, if it would be possible that the north side code people would get with them, the south side code people, and work that situation out, to give them a chance to have a hold on it, because it's too few people for all the work that they have to do. And this last thing, in my neighborhood, there are lots that need to be mowed, and some of the lots are half-mowed, it's just a portion that's mowed, and some of it is, I know we have contractors doing jobs, but that needs to be upkeep on what they're doing, because, and I'm not saying all contractors are doing this, but on some of the lots, it used to be bushes, but now it's trees, and we would like some help on that, and any way we could get that done, we would appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Woolridge.
Yes, ma'am.
Next speaker card I have is from John Whitfield.
Hi, my name is John Whitfield. I live at 408 Elektra in Longview. You might want to give me a list of those rules now. I've never been here and done this before. I've got a superlative grasp of the English vernacular, but I am from East Texas, so if my language gets away from me, you can correct me on the fly. I'm here to talk about the homeless initiative. I understand a grant's coming through, think we're going to give it to the soup kitchen and stuff, which is about two blocks from my house. I think I've talked to the city, the mayor's office, or maybe the city manager or something last year, and I showed y'all some ideas that I have. They asked me at the time to submit for my 501(c)(3), which I did not, and they also asked me to bring those ideas to you and share them with you, which I just haven't had time. But if y'all really don't want them to be homeless and run around, you give me about a year to two years, and I can solve your current homeless problem, with it being a benefit to the city and future tax dollars that you can't collect now, the economy, by taking the homeless people and reintegrating them into viable jobs, businesses, or stuff like that. The reason the city manager told me is because she had heard about nine people that I got off the streets in one month. To be honest, that's my record. I've got rented houses that I don't charge people to stay in, I get them out of the shelters, I buy them cars, I get them back into businesses or working and get them back into society, where they're not running around in a circle trying to eat all day and take a shower here and there and do whatever and be in by 5:00 with no place of address that they can even get a job at. So I told the city, I said, whoever I spoke to, if she's here tonight, maybe you remember, I'm bad with names. She thanked me for what I was doing, and I said, "Well, of course, it's nothing like what y'all do with your habitat for humanity and everything." She said, "Oh, no, Mr. Whitfield, you're doing a lot better job than the city of Longview." So that shocked me. So that's when I told her about my idea to solve the homeless problem. I'd be willing to elaborate on that, but time doesn't allow it tonight. If y'all could slow up on what you're going to do with that money, you can either listen to my ideas, stack it and run, or, you know, help me with it. Ball's in your court. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Whitfield. I do not have any more speaker cards. Is there anyone that would like to speak and fill out a card after speaking? If not, I will return to presentation item C and ask for Cory Jermaine Street to come up front with any transit folks that are going to join me up front. Come on, all the way up. Thank you for being here. I'm Krista. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
We are celebrating Mr. Street tonight for a very intense act of bravery that happened on one of our Longview Transit buses. I believe that we've released the video to one of the news teams that will probably share that, but I will tell you that in watching that, I know that you are a much braver person than me, and I appreciate that. I do want to give everyone else here a little bit of information about that. Tonight, we are taking a special moment to recognize Cory for his active bravery in late May. During the course of a 50-minute bus ride on Longview Transit, a passenger became increasingly agitated and aggressive. His threatening behavior posed a safety risk to the Longview Transit driver and to the fellow passengers. At risk to his own personal safety, Cory intervened in the situation and was able to help forcefully remove the passenger from the bus to protect his fellow passengers. Longview Transit has been thankful to recognize Cory with some gift cards, but we asked him to come tonight so we could publicly recognize him and honor him for his active bravery and selflessness in serving others. So is there anything, Cory, that you would like to say?
I love my city. I love my city. I love the bus situation that's going on. The bus drivers, they all cool, and that situation wasn't cool. I mean, it really, like, it went on too long, but I had to do what I had to do at the time, so, but it's been, ever since then, like, the staff, the whole, everybody's been so nice to me, but I'm like, I think anyone would have did the same thing at the time, because it was kind of crazy at the time, but hey, at the time, really, it was just me and two older people, so I was like, I had to do something, so, but here we are.
Well, Cory physically picked him up and pushed him out the doors, so, thank you. But Cory, we want to thank you sincerely for stepping up and loving and serving our other residents here in Longview. Just, thank you. You're a true hero, and we're very grateful.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yep, come on. Everybody wants to get their picture, maybe. Appreciate you guys. And next, let me get my back on track. Next is consent agenda. Are there any items that council would like to pull off for discussion questions?
Yes, I had one, and it was under A. It's in regards to the rental, and Sean's here. I kind of talked with Ron a little bit, but I think the explanation would be great coming from you.
Sure.
Why this place is warranted, and location, and things like that.
Yeah, so we have downtown, it's 109 West Tyler Street is where we have our offices for our visit Longview, it's our visitor center for the city, as well as our offices for our downtown programs. We're a Main Street community. We've been at that locations for four years now. Prior to that, we were located here at City Hall, and then this location became available, and we were able to get downtown, which so much of our programming takes place right there, and so we really wanted to be right in the heart of downtown. So it's difficult to find locations downtown, and when this one became available, we jumped on that opportunity and brought that to council four years ago.
Got it. Now, how many people do we have that's located down in that office?
We have six full-time, and then some part-time that help us in the store there. And so what we have, it is the visitor center, but it's also, it is, we have a gift shop that we've opened, because when we were looking at what we wanted to do, if we could have that downtown location, is we wanted to be able to offer a gift store and have unique Longview products. That's something that we've seen in some other communities as well, is you can actually have advertising walking around for you all over town and going out to other communities, because now you have a Longview t-shirt. You've got, people came in today, actually, to buy some gifts that they were sending to some college students that are not home anymore, and so to be able to get some of those things that you can send from home. So we wanted to do that, and we're able to do that actually in a way where we're, we buy a lot of things through Texas products, but also some Longview creators of products, so a lot of the things are actually made by people here in Longview.
Well, you know, I think it's a great location for where we're at. I just wanted to explain so people would understand, because that's one of the things I talked with Ron about, is, you know, we do have some other facilities, but I know we have a lot of events that happen downtown, and I just wanted it to be clear, and so people understood, hey, this is why it's important. And when you want to shop Longview, shop 109 Tyler Street.
That's right. Come on by, yeah. And we really enjoy being there. It is a lease situation. Our long-term, we would really like to have our own space where it's not a lease, but, you know, we wanted to be able to try it as a lease, see how things are going, and so far, it's been, it's been fantastic, but we know our long-term is we'd really like to have a city-owned facility in the downtown area.
And this may be off cuff, traffic pattern, do you know what our traffic is, people coming in?
So it really depends on the day, when there's events going on, where we've had a lot of people coming through, and then other days, you know, it can be a trickle, it can be, you know, it can be just nonstop crowd. So it really just depends on what's going on downtown.
Yeah, all right. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Conley. Nope, hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to dismiss you yet. I'm sorry.
Now, I just had a couple, was a follow-up with the traffic. Is there any way, like, we have data that shows the benefit as far as maybe increased revenue? Do you have any data, Sean, that would let us know the effectiveness of how the visitor center's progressing?
Sure, I could get some of that for you. One of the things, just in terms of, with the gift shop, we do get some revenue, obviously, by selling products there, and so some of that can go against some of our expenses there. You know, we're not doing that in the same way that we're trying to run a full, like, business in terms of retail store. We have a retail store, and it helps cover that expense. But again, our goal with a lot of it is to be able to put that promotional Longview and East Texas information out there for people.
And then it says the rents 3,000 plus prorated expenses equal to property taxes. Do you have, how much was the estimate, like, what's the property tax?
So the property tax for this year is $4,727, and so the, when we were renegotiating the lease, he wanted to leave the base rate the same as what we've had for the past four years, but he asked for us to go up by the amount of what his property tax would be, and since this is a three-year lease, that may change, and so then that's why we did it based on this property, this prorated method.
So this lease is for three years?
It is a three-year lease, but we can terminate at any time. So if we find another opportunity, then we can, we can go to that, so there's no early termination issue whatsoever.
And are there, are we exploring, you think there's some opportunities for something to buy in the area?
Anytime there's an opportunity of another space, we, obviously, we'll check on that as well, and we do regularly check with some folks. Unfortunately, the downtown area, there's, the, it's a good problem. A lot of our spaces downtown are filled. The downside is, the ones that remain available, current owners aren't interested in selling, and so we do have some underutilized spaces downtown, but until they're ready and willing.
All right, thank you for your time, Sean.
Absolutely, thank you.
Any other items on consent agenda? We have questions or comments? If not, can I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Next on our agenda is zoning, item A. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, and Mr. Mcfee. So the applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow for a restaurant with a drive-through window in general retail zoning district. A specific use permit is required within this zoning district to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. This property is located at the corner of Gilmer Road and Spring Hill Road. Gilmer is classified as a principal arterial and is maintained by TechStot, and this type of development is appropriate along this roadway as long as access management is followed. This development will share access with the adjacent properties along Gilmer Road. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Choi? Go ahead, Mr. Conley.
I just got a comment. What a big day for Spring Hill, man. We get state champs at McDonald's. What a day, man. We're loving it.
Take a chance at McDonald's, that's right. This item does require a public hearing that I will open at this time. I do have a speaker card for Rob Wallen. Is that just for questions?
Just for questions, yes, ma'am.
Perfect. Are there any others that would like to make comment during the public hearing? If not, I will close the public hearing. Any other discussion, comments, or do I have a motion?
I have.
Nope, sorry, go ahead.
No, motion approved.
All right. I have a motion from Mr. Wade.
Second.
Second from Mr. Barry Hill. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? McDonald's and Spring Hill is approved. Thank you so much, Ms. Choi.
Thanks, Ms.
Next, yes, thank you. Next on our agenda is budget items, discussion of the proposed 25, 26 budget, tax rate, and proposed fee resolution for the city of Longview. Mr. Mcfee.
Okay, so tonight, I've done a lot of talking at the last two meetings, so I'm going to try not to talk as much, but I did think it was important to go through just a few items. The first one I'm going to start out with is, you remember, we had asterisks, a lot of asterisks on our previous presentation, and that was largely because Angela had obviously talked about, we don't have final values, we don't have numbers, and we received final certified values, I want to say, late yesterday from Gregg County Appraisal District, and so this morning, as I came into work, I get here quite, quite a bit early, and Angela had beat me here, as is normal sometimes. I went down to talk to her, and she told me that she had gotten the appraised values and that she was doing work on the calculation of the tax rate that had been presented, and I said, "Well, I will reach out to our Harrison County Tax Appraiser, Mr. Lee Flowers," who I'm going to give a special shout out to both Mark Cormier at the Gregg County Appraisal District and Lee Flowers at the Harrison County Appraisal District. They have, they have answered my calls when I've called and gone over and above to try and give me the information that I need. So that's to say that while I don't have final values from Harrison County Appraisal District, I have what they sent to be reviewed for compliance. So with that, we recalculated the proposed tax rate, and we can fund the budget as proposed with a property tax increase of only one cent per hundred. So if you will recall, at the last time we presented, it was 2.3 cents, and this is actually one cent. The valuations from the Gregg County Appraisal District came in about 2.5% higher than our original estimations. Harrison County is a less significant portion of our taxable value, so we don't think it's going to move more than this, but obviously, in the next presentation. So that's really the best news that I think I could bring to this council in a difficult position this year due to financial situations, and of course, the first question everyone wants to know is, what does that mean? So if you're, if you're increasing the rate by a penny on an average home, that's $22.33 a year, or $1.86 per month. So that's a substantial decrease from the, I believe it was $4.86, if I'm remembering it off the top of my head. And the updated property tax rate slide that we will show you is 57.19, which I think, again, is an important standpoint. When you look back at the, what was, what should have been the voter-approved two-cent tax increase that the voters approved for the fire pension bond of 57.89, the proposed tax rate for this year's budget is now lower than that rate that we went to the voters saying that we needed to do this. So I think it's good news, or as good a news as I thought I'd be able to bring, that we were, we were very pleased to present this to council. So with that, that's kind of the summary of what I had ready to present, as I alluded to at the last city council meeting, that we were going to introduce the fees other than the sanitation and the water rates that we talked about, and so in your budget books, I referenced there were memos that we were preparing to be put in, and so I'd like to call on the directors that were responsible for coming up with those fee increases that proposed them, to go ahead and explain each of those and go through those slides with council. So the first one is Ms. Cohen, so.
Thank you. This fee change is for the credit cards, and so currently, the city absorbs the costs of processing credit card payments. This requested fee change would pass through those costs to the customers using that payment option. The cost associated with credit card processing fees has increased from $148,000 in 2020 to an estimated $485,000 in 2026. This fee will reduce expenses, it will not increase revenues, and the budget that we presented last week has that $485,000 out of the budget. The resolution is written to accommodate the multiple credit card processors used across the city, and we will be, it will be no greater than 5% of a transaction with a minimum charge of $2.50, and with that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Cohen?
Okay.
Thank you.
And the next one I'd like to call up is Michael Shirley to talk about the development services fees that he proposed increases to.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As I submitted in our, in the memo in your budget books, we are proposing several fee increases as an incremental way to bridge the gap between our cost of service and trying to recoup some of that. We're certainly not proposing that we cover that cost all the way. We certainly see that building and development, we want to keep it somewhat incentivized. If we were to try to capture our full cost, it would, it would be quite a bit more of an increase. With that said, on our building permit fees, what we're requesting is to increase our residential permit fees. Those are based on a price per square foot. Currently, 25 cents per square foot. We're asking for an increase to go to 30 cents per square foot. Our commercial building permits, we're requesting an increase in just our base, base fee. Those are a sliding scale based on the job valuation. in just our base, base fee. Those are a sliding scale based on the job valuation. And we're asking that that base fee be increased and also for a slight increase in what that sliding scale value is. It's roughly about a three and a half percent increase kind of across the board on the commercial side. And what kind of some examples of what that would look like, you know, roughly on a 2,000 square foot home currently, that would be about a $500 permit. That would increase it to about $600. One of the reasons for that also is last year, we did add an inspection to our process, and that was an inspection that was discussed with our builders, was discussed with former council member and our Builders' Association who, who supported that because it was adding a inspection on the front end when they do their pre-foundation forming. So that way, if there were any issues, we would be able to catch that before plumbing was put in the ground and it would cost builders several thousand dollars to fix it. That does add a trip. And so what we're looking at is trip charges are anywhere, you know, from 120 to 150 when you factor in overhead vehicles, fuel charges, depending on all of that. So that was one of the main reasons for increasing that residential permit fee. Also, we're asking for most of our trade permits, like our mechanical, electrical, plumbing permits, that base fee. And it's just a standardized fee. We're asking for a $5 increase across the board on those fees. There again, to try to cover our trip charges. We haven't increased those fees in a number of years. And then moving on to our engineering review fees, that is something that we are shifting more towards third-party reviews to help offset and maintain our turnaround times. We, when we were doing that in-house, we had about an $80 per hour fee is what we charged. And that is in relation to a state law change that occurred two sessions ago where we could no longer charge a percentage of the job. We actually had to try to calculate actual hours and actual cost. But we are engaging a third-party engineer and their cost per hour is $150. So we're just requesting to capture that charge on that. We're also asking to standardize our water and sewer tap permit fee, and that would be a fee when the third-party actually does the tap, not when the city does it. They get a permit from us. We have to do a review. There's some administrative cost and then there's inspection processes. And that's just a straight line, 150 for that. That, that covers those trips because those are generally going to be at least one to two trips for those. In our environmental health area, we are requesting a, across the board, $25 increase on those permits. There has been, in this last session, there was a change in state law that we cannot require permit fees greater than what the state does. There's a lot of things done in that that align us with what the State Department of Health is doing as far as how they permit, what they charge for permit fees. And so this is to get us in better alignment with that. And this would help cover those, those costs as far as those trips that we do, you know, anywhere, depending on the, the criticalness of the inspection, how many frequencies we do a year, whether it be two to three to four, special inspections, so on and so forth. And then in our planning and zoning area, we are requesting some increases to our plat review fees, just to bring those to try to, to cover some additional costs. There's a lot of staff time review. We do third-party reviews on those. We did evaluate other communities and we, and we were just asking for a nominal increase from 307 to 320 on that one. Our zoning change request is probably the most significant that we're requesting. A standard rezone currently is $307. We're requesting to go to 420, along with charging back all of the additional costs for mailouts, for newspaper postings. We have to post newspaper ads and we have to send letters to property owners by state law 200 feet, but by city ordinance, 300 feet. And so we would just pass that along. And that is pretty standard that cities are going to instead of increasing the standard cost. Because there's anywhere from 10 to 15 hours of staff time that goes into a rezone. I know the, the P and Z meetings in council, it's real quick, but there's a lot of research, staff reports. There's a trip. We put signs on the property. So there's a lot of staff time and this is just to try to recoup some of that, some of that cost. Sorry, my phone keeps going off here. And then site plan review, that is in our commercial development, that is our overall site development plan. Currently, that's $307. Generally, there's four departments that are reviewing that. A lot of third-party, that gets done in a third-party. So we're just trying to recover those third-party costs going from 307 to $640. We did look at some other cities to see what they, what they do. It's all over the place, but we're still feel significantly lower. And then, as I'd mentioned, required legal notices, just recovering the actual cost on any of those that require additional legal notice postings. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Shirley. Questions for Mr. Shirley? Are you saying yes? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Collins.
With the, going back to the residential and commercial, particularly the residential square feet, you said you like looking at other cities. Is that, when you, when you determine the, the price for that permit per square foot, is that, can you kind of explain what the process looks like? How, how, what we know we need as far as the revenue and then comparing it to be competitive for our builders and?
Sure. And, and one of the things that we like to do is make those fees where they're easy to calculate, because in the past, those fees have been real sliding scale, very ambiguous, having a price per square foot. So that's going to be total square foot under roof. When we look at comparisons, Tyler's probably our biggest comparison because that's probably, you know, we do comparisons there a lot. We try to stay in line. They have a very similar building and construction industry. And so we looked at them and I want to say they were like 30 to $35 per foot. And so we're significantly lower than that. And like I said, that, there's about three departments that review that plan. And then there's anywhere from five to six inspections. So just trying to cover that cost. And when we changed that fee structure two sessions ago, trying to calculate a price per square foot to equal what we were getting before, which was a very apples to oranges, we didn't quite get it right. So this is going to help bring that more in line as well and help stabilize that revenue.
Yeah, and I was just, you know, always, obviously, the revenue needed, but also being in, like you said, you use the word incentivize, Builders' Association and commercial. So commercial, same, same concept. You would look at that compared to other cities and making?
Yeah. And, and when we looked at Tyler, they, ours is a sliding scale. So, you know, if you're, say, $100,000 in value, you're paying more per thousand of value than you are in the upper tiers of that value. So it's a sliding scale. I think Tyler just has a straight $5 a square foot or per thousand square foot. So their permits are significantly more, or at least what we saw online compared to what ours were. So we still felt like we were way below that and making, like I said, it, we kind of looked at some different scenarios and it equated to about a three to three and a half percent, which is not keeping up with inflation by any means, but we felt like that was an appropriate level to ask for.
All right. Thank you, Michael.
Good. And just a comment real quick. I appreciate hearing you talk about efficiency there. I realize that brings some additional costs when you have third parties that are involved, but I know it's been a real focus of yours to have better efficiency with your online portal. And I think that's a great way to do that. It's a good balance. We're not over staffing and development services. We're able to utilize that. We do have to charge it a little bit higher of a fee, but hopefully our turnaround and our customer service is just getting better and better. So I know, yeah, same comment.
Yeah, I was going to say, when I met with, with Michael, that's one of the things, and I thought, boy, if you could explain that, because I know turnaround was a big issue and how we have tried to streamline, make things a little bit quicker.
Absolutely.
Because we don't want roadblocks when we're building, you know, we don't want things to eat up people's time because everybody knows time is money. But if you could kind of touch on that just a little bit, what you were telling me, you know, when we visited that day, because I think it's important for people to understand.
Absolutely. Time is money. And so one of the things we've really focused on with our technology is trying to maintain turnaround times and exceed those. And so, you know, on like a commercial permit, 10-day turnaround, that's, that's what we advertise. That's what we try to guarantee. We do advertise that online, too. We have online in our, we have on our online portal where you can apply for permits, but we also have dashboards that show where we're at, the usage of the portal. I think when I was looking today, we're like 60% of our permits are coming in on the portal. So that increases our credit card usage because that's all credit cards. So that, I think that's, you know, in our department, that's anywhere from 40 to 60,000 a year that we were paying in credit card fees. But with that, we're also using third-party reviewers in, in our engineering, in our building department, planning and zoning, so that we can use our, our in-house staff to help get the quicker projects turned around and also be there, because we have a lot of walk-in traffic. Every Thursday, we spend doing pre-development meetings with potential developers. And so we, we've basically reduced the amount of time that we can spend doing plan reviews and meeting with people by a day because we have six appointments that day that we stay filled with. So kind of helping to balance that, but still focusing on maintaining those turnaround times. Residential, we do in five days or less. So, you know, we try to get everything out 10-day turnaround.
And I know you were telling me in regards to permits and fees, we were well below what a lot of people in the area, and we're just really trying to recoup a lot of our costs that we're already spending and still be fair to our, our citizens, our people who are coming in to develop.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
But no, I appreciated that, so.
Yeah, good point. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Shirley?
I have one comment. One of the things that I'm very proud of the job Michael's done over in development services. And one of the things that he mentions to me and he tells his folks that when he's encouraging them, he says, "Our job is to make our customers successful." And it's that kind of, it's that kind of approach that he has really tried to implement. So if you have feedback from Michael, when things don't go well and you hear about those things, that's a gift for him because he can make sure that doesn't happen along the way in the future. So.
I'm amused. I'm amused. I'm being sentimental on that. You know, I think it's, being honest, the open communication, people knowing what they're doing ahead of time is important and they've got a good plan for going in with that, but you got to pay attention to it. You got to know what you're hit with.
Absolutely. We're not perfect and we do make mistakes, but we want to know it so we can fix it so we don't do it again.
Exactly.
Perfect. Thank you. Good job, Michael.
Next, I'd like to welcome back Sean Hera to talk about the convention complex fees.
All right. Good evening again. So for the Longview Convention Complex, that includes MODCOB Convention Center, the Longview Exhibit Center, the Rodeo Arena. Those are the primary facilities that are part of our fee structure. We did a rate review this year. We pulled together a committee that included hotelier, a couple of our user groups that are clients there, as well as the Visit Longview staff and Longview Convention Complex staff. And Gabe Bennett, who is our convention manager there, is here with us today as well. So what we did was we looked at similar facilities all around us. And why we're, we did that this year is because every several years, you really need to look at your, your rates and make sure, are we still where we need to be? We last increased our rates in 2022. Before that, and in 2022, we increased both our facility rates and also our equipment rates. So to make things clear, when you rent MODCOB or the Exhibit Center, you're renting the building and then you pay per item for tables and chairs. We do it like that because every event is so different. Some people need no tables and chairs, and so we don't want them to have to pay that extra. So essentially, we try to keep our rates very low and make it fit with what that event is. So we did a rate increase for our Exhibit Center, I mean, for our, our equipment in 2015, I believe. It might have been somewhere in there. And then the other facility rates were last increased in 2011. And so from 2011 to 2022, we fell way behind where we are in terms of valuing that facility. When you think about the complex, we stay in very high demand. It's very difficult to get an open weekend date. So Gabe pulled some numbers looking at 23, 24, because that was the last time that we didn't have as much construction going on because we've been doing a lot of improvements out there. There were only two open weekends throughout the year at MODCOB, I believe, or I was at the Exhibit Center. There were only four open weekends at MODCOB. And so we stay very busy. We have over 300 unique events every year, but that's more than 600 event dates. So there's high demand for those facilities. But when we looked at our rates, it shows that we're, we're kind of undervaluing that space when we compare to other similar facilities that are out there. We're in the, the lowest price or the, one of the lowest three prices of any facilities that we looked at. So we are recommending to increase those rates to especially have a better balance of how much the, the client is paying for the service that we're providing. So right now, the, our total recovery on rental rates, it only pays for essentially the event monitor staff that are there and the security. So the city, through the hotel occupancy tax, is covering all of the rest of the expenses in terms of the, all of the office staff, the maintenance staff, the booking coordinator, as well as all the maintenance of the facility. And so we're saying, we would like to do is eventually have the client rates help cover a larger portion of the operations of that facility. And again, also be in line with some of the costs that are out there at other facilities and other communities. So that's our overall goal. So what we are proposing is an increase to the rates, the facility rates for MODCOB and the Exhibit Center, raising those base rates, and then also reducing the nonprofit discount that is provided. And 2022 is when we set that at 33%. We did that because our nonprofit rates was, they weren't an even percentage. Some were as high as 55% and some were lower than that. And we said, okay, we're just going to equalize it now. But when we look out there and see what other communities do, the, the more normal discount is 10 to 20% of a nonprofit discount, but a lot of facilities don't offer any discount at all for nonprofits. Tyler, with their new Brookshire Center, offers no discount whatsoever for nonprofits, and that is true at many convention centers. So we're suggesting, again, to be more like the market, to, to reduce that to 15%. We have a large number of nonprofits that utilize the facility. In fact, over half of our events are nonprofit events. But that also means that we're essentially subsidizing the fundraiser that they're having, and we want them to be successful. That's very important, but that's a piece to take into consideration is what is the appropriate level of that nonprofit discount? And so that's why we're suggesting to do that more in line with some of the other facilities that we see. There are a variety of other miscellaneous charges that we're suggesting change. A lot of those are smaller in total impact, but are helpful for us in our operational side of things. Some of those things include actually eliminating a premium rate. Currently, we charge extra for ticketed events, but we're suggesting for that to not, us not do that anymore, but instead actually change our model and have a premium rate that is for the weekend when our highest demand is and a discounted rate for weekday rentals. Some of the other things that we're asking for is for us to increase the, the security fee, which is for the police officers that are there, that would be actually closer to what the actual cost is, is for having the police officer there. And then we're introducing a few other things like a, a late payment fee for if any individuals are, are late in, in bringing forward that payment and a few other smaller changes as well. The big thing to keep in mind is most of this budgetary impact is going to have a delay for us for about a year because the facility is always booked and they're usually booked a year out. And so most of these events for next year are already under contract. So you're going to see this impact really a year from now. And the key thing to think with that is if we don't make much action now, that it means for us to catch up, it will keep having a one-year delay. So just something to think about. Any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Wade?
Do we have a slow month out there at MODCOB?
Do we have a slow month? I'd say probably one of the closest things to it. We only, we only do four holidays total that we, we aren't open. And so Thanksgiving, we actually, we, we allow our, our employees to have a holiday at Thanksgiving. So we are closed then, and we're closed at Christmas and on New Year's. So during that period, it's a little bit less because we say, no, you cannot book. But beyond that, it is, it is very full all the time. Our slowest time really is the weekdays, and that's why we're saying perhaps let's do a little bit of a discount on those weekdays.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Collins, you have questions?
Yeah, did, Sean, you said, I'm, I'm looking at our budget, the revenue for, for 24, 25 versus 25, 26 projection, MODCOB. Am I seeing this correctly? Because it, it's a, the revenue is projected 2,51,680?
Okay, so that's the total revenue for the budget. So the amount that we have, our year-end estimate for this year for rental revenue is about 430,000. We're actually, we're coming in a little bit better than that. So we might end up a little bit higher than that 430. But, and last- But, and last year, we were at about 500,000 in revenue from the rental side of things, but we've been doing a lot of renovations. And so, the Exhibit Center was actually closed for several months, and so, our rental revenue was a little bit lower this year because of that closure. But, the rest of the revenue is from hotel occupancy tax, and then, we have some miscellaneous revenue as well. We do sponsorships for July 4th, and then, we'll, you know, just little miscellaneous charges as well.
So, would I understand that correctly to mean that the revenue reflected there is actually what hotel occupancy tax is supplementing there?
Correct.
And I think, is that about a million? That's the number I have in my head. Is that correct?
A little bit over.
A little bit over.
Okay, so, I'll pull this up right here. So, so, it's about, this is in general, most years, we're about 69% hotel occupancy tax, about 28% rental revenue, and at 3%. That, it's, again, it fluctuates from year to year, but somewhere in that general area.
So, basically, the fees are, you're projecting the fees for rental at 430, around 430,000? Is that right?
This, this year.
This year has been?
But last year, we were at 511,000, but the Exhibit Center was closed. So, for the three-year rolling average, we were 462,000.
And that, and, so, I like Mr. Wade brought up, so, I know we've got a lot of things going on. We've got a dog show this weekend, right?
Three. Yeah, there are three separate events out there.
So, but, I guess, the, for most, for our education, really, MODCOB has done a good job of being, attracting people to Longview, and we're seeing an increase in basically rentals and the fees and the money we're gaining from having that facility.
Absolutely. Yeah, we stay, we stay very full throughout the year. And so, kudos to the staff, kudos to them, to doing everything they can to book as many events as they can, even if that means that they're having to work late nights to flip something to get the next event in. But yeah, we stay very, very full.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. McPhee.
I have one thing to add, just for counsel to understand. Sean obviously brought these to us in a very large format. It was a multi-page memo. He's very good at justifying it. But one of the key phrases that I took away from the conversation, and I think it's one of the most powerful things that he described it, is sometimes we undervalue that asset. In other words, we can attract bigger and better things, but because the price point has been so compressed, it doesn't get used at its highest and best use all the time. So, I think undervaluing that facility is, that was the takeaway I had from it with him and the reason for the adjustment of the fees. Did I say that properly, Sean?
Yes, absolutely. We, you don't want, we are one of the only really large facilities in town. You don't want our rates to be cheaper than a smaller facility that they could get, so then, you're using our, the best, biggest space to have a large event, and you're hosting a small party. So, a small private event is not ideally what you would want to utilize and subsidize with hotel occupancy tax to instead have a large tourism event, because that's what we want to be available for, so.
Well, and I think keeping in mind too, balancing the subsidy that's happening from our hotel occupancy tax funds could be used in other places. So, if we were more appropriately valuing our asset and receiving higher revenue that could cover that, then those funds could be used in other very important places.
Absolutely. And I'll also say to advocate for it, what we've been able to do, because we've already been able to increase our revenue, it's allowing us to do much-needed maintenance and repair that hadn't been done previously. And so, because we've had that more revenue, we've been able to better maintain the facility, and we've been able to start making these large capital improvements. So, and we have a master plan to be able to continue to bring us up, up to par with so many other facilities.
Perfect. Thank you, Sean.
And last but not least, I'd welcome our new fire chief, Chief Grimes, to talk about his fees. That, sorry, I skipped that slide earlier, so.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We were proposing a lift-assist fee schedule. And a lift-assist, as it says on the board here, is, it's really when someone falls at a skilled nursing facility and is not injured, they do not need medical care. But, the nursing, I'm sorry, the skilled nursing facilities have become fairly commonplace where they call the fire department to show up to help lift these individuals, patients or residents off the ground and really supplementing their staff. These are non-priority calls, and the real downside to these type of calls is it takes the response capacity for the fire department to a lower standard for real emergencies. And so, the fee schedule is really designed not so much for revenue impact for the city, but to decrease those calls for service that are non-priority, allowing other apparatus to be available, or those apparatus to be available for those true emergencies, major accidents, structured fires, all that stuff that happens on a daily basis. The non-emergency calls, you know, really, to be impactful for that, it would increase that response capacity, but also would lower, in my opinion, would lower the fuel costs and the maintenance costs of the fire apparatus that are responding to those, again, leaving those more available for priority calls. The fee schedule would not be charged to the patient or the resident. It would be going to the facility itself with the hopes that they would lean more towards self-reliance over a period of time, and then, again, reduce that total call volume, allowing us to better respond to true emergencies. Other agencies, this is not unique to the Longview area or to Texas. It's all over the United States, and it is a drain on public services to the residents who pay those taxes for us to provide those emergency services. So, I feel like that this is a step in the right direction to free up some assets for those emergencies. Some of the research that I did, about 60% decrease in non-emergency calls when other departments had enacted these same fee schedules. Now, the schedule that, the fee schedule that we've asked for is a $250 fee after the first one is free. The second one on that next facility, same facility, is $250. The agencies that I did research on, those were upwards of $500 and $600 per event. So, we came in pretty modest or conservative on that to see the impact, and we want a view over the next six to eight months, once, if this is approved, to see what impact that's given us. Have any questions I can answer?
Any questions or comments? No. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Chief Grimes.
Sure. Thank you.
That concludes what I had ready to present for y'all tonight, so.
Another discussion?
Yes.
Go for it.
I wanted to make sure, I wanted to go over, you did a property, the property tax, you did a decrease on that. So, are you still requesting a 6% across-the-board raise for all employees with $1,000 with that decrease?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And so, is that sustainable?
Yes, ma'am.
With the one cent increase?
Yes, ma'am.
And so, when you base that 6%, looking at the salaries of everybody from the bottom, from the top to the bottom, what are you basing that 6% on?
Their existing salary.
So, you're saying on the existing salary that they, everybody?
You would add, everybody all across the board would get 6% increase of their salary plus a flat adjustment of 1,000 for the salary, annual salary, based on 52 weeks a year and 40 hours per week.
And so, I guess for me, looking at, looking at the pays and from, going from the top to, say, 232,000, then going all the way to the bottom to like 31,000 for employees, it's just kind of hard for me to say, "Okay, let's do a 6% raise for everybody and not look at it, you know, systematically at each employee," because you have some employees that were getting raises mid-budget year, and now, we're coming to this, and they will get that same raise. Meanwhile, we haven't gave our lower hourly employees a raise. So, that's, I mean, that's my biggest concern.
No one will get this, everyone will be brought up to at least a 6%, $1,000. So, any adjustments that were beyond that, those employees would not receive an adjustment. So, it's only for employees that did not receive a total 6% plus $1,000 flat adjustment.
I mean, I guess I'm getting kind of confused on what we're trying to accomplish here because we went through this last year, and it wasn't sustainable, and now, it's sustainable at one cent. So, I mean, I just don't want to go down the line and in the future say, "Hey, well, we got to come back. We got to either lay off or raise property taxes again," and go through all that, the next budget session.
No, ma'am. This is based on the new valuations, make the one cent sustainable. I have told council, every year that I presented a budget to city council, I have told you, "It is our job to present a budget that is sustainable. This budget as presented with the adjustments is sustainable." The one asterisk I will add to that is the business personal property tax exemption that is going to the voters that could prevent a $1.6 million revenue impact to the city next year. If that does happen to be the case next year, we still have the two cents if that were to occur. But what I would tell you is if you take last year, where we were at in budgeting, we were at a 2.17% tax increase to give a 3% raise. Well, because of the growth in revenue this year, that growth in revenue due to property valuations, a one-cent adjustment this year covers the 6% plus $1,000 adjustment in salary for all employees. And so, we have not seen values go down in aggregate over the county appraisal systems. That's not the trend.
And so, I guess, I'm thinking back to our last council meeting when we discussed a person that has been working here for a year or two years at a rate, I'm just throwing out a number, maybe $12 an hour, not seeing a raise for years, and there's no plan or anything like that for them. Is that correct?
There is no step pay plan for non-public safety employees. What we normally do for career progression, and there, a number of different directors can comment on that, but we hire entry-level workers and we train them up to fill the seats left by those that moved up behind them. And that is a grow-your-own-employee from the base level, teach them the Longview way, the culture of how we do things, how we work, and train them, and offer them advancement through increased responsibility. That truly is the way towards sustained raises. The, the times that if someone comes in at an entry level and they decide they don't want to do more than an entry level, until such time that city council adopts an across-the-board raise, they do not get a pay increase from year to year.
Okay, so, I'm trying to figure out, you know, with us saying, "Okay, we're going to raise the property tax," and I do, and I appreciate y'all working diligently and going, getting it down to one cent. What I'm saying is, is that if we look at all these people that are paid these top-dollar amounts versus our hourly employees who can't even afford the health insurance, they cannot even go to the clinic, and I looked at the health and premium going up as well. So, for me, it's kind of hard to balance that when I see all these other people up here, and your hourly employees are not getting any benefit from that.
I will tell you that across the board, the employees at every level of the positions within the city are paid less than comparable employees across the, regardless of position. And we have percentages on that if we want to discuss that, but all of our employees are paid less than what they make in other communities. And by that, I mean all the way from the top down to the bottom and right back up. So, that problem exists throughout the organization.
Okay, so, you're basing this on the professional pay study, or you're basing this on cities that y'all are compared to, like those cities that y'all, like the Abilene, the Beaumont, and all of those other cities? To me, that are really not in comparison to us because they're structured differently. They have better sales revenue. They have more businesses than we have here. Just even looking at Tyler alone, Tyler has way more population greater than ours, so people shop there more. They have way more restaurants that bring people there. We don't have that here.
And Tyler is only the base point of reference for salaries with public safety sector employees. It is not the same for all other government employees. So, general government employees are compared to the cities that were selected by city council as comparable cities. But what I will tell you is even with the 6% plus $1,000 flat adjustments, that does not bring us to market pay. It does not bring up, bring us to 95% of market pay. It brings us to about 91% of market pay on average. So, across the board, it improves, it actually gives a higher raise. The reason it was structured that way is to give a higher raise percentage-wise to our lowest wage earners, because those are the people that are experiencing the exact same thing that you were referencing. And when we started the budget year, there were conversations early on within the budget team and the directors that the number we were shooting for was 9% to recover everybody closer to the market pay. We got to 8.4% for the low-wage earners, and we fell short at the end, at the higher end of the scale. But obviously, we care about the people delivering the services into our community and our residents, which is why it was structured that way.
I don't have any other questions at this time. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Crowley.
Very happy to hear this news about the increase in revenue.
Yes, sir.
I think we, I said this last meeting, I think there's a balance here. We want to make sure we compensate our people fairly for recruitment and retention purposes. And I'm happy to hear that the one cent is down. But I do think there's two things we look at, and is being able to take care of our employees, but also not raise taxes. And the one cent, I love that we've made, went that, that's reduced from two and a half cents. But I'm, as we move forward, and I do appreciate the diligence of that, but the questions, I guess, are looking at how, are there ways to be more creative and where we don't have any property tax increase and still be able to have a raise that's, gives everybody something that, you know, is fair with their cost of living? And especially looking at, you know, keeping good people, we want to do that. We want to take care of, and like Ms. Moore talked about, we definitely know that there's people out there that if they work for the city of Longview and they can't afford their health insurance, then we want to make sure they're compensated at a fair rate. I ask though, the 91% market pay, that's based on the, it's not based on, the last meeting we talked about, we used, three years ago, we used this service that we're not using to determine the 91%, right? 91% was the cities that you guys showed in the last meeting.
Yes. We did not use public sector personnel consultants. We only use them in the years that we do market pay plan assessments. However, in the years that we don't do those assessments, we go out to those same 16 survey cities, and we ask them what they pay across a myriad of positions, each one of our levels, certain different positions throughout the organization. And then, we assess that, we average that out, and that's how we come up with exactly how far behind we are through the different levels across the organization. And our general workforce right now is 14% behind market before they give pay raises, and we don't know what the cities are going to do, but we know that some of them have already told us they're going to give pay raises this year, so that 14% will only increase if we do nothing.
So, the 91% would be with the, with the 6% raise and the $1,000. Is that correct, your projection?
Yes.
And, I mean, again, I just want to, again, I'm so happy to hear we're down to one cent. I just want to be able to take care of our people and not raise taxes.
I don't think that's possible this year. So, the budget as presented is with the one cent increase and with those proposals. So, we're not able to, we've cut everything we can. This is the budget. It is the budget that will be voted on without change. I do think, my comment would just be, I really worry that we undervalue our admin who are working there when we talk about it in that manner. So, if everybody is under market, we are asking an admin team to manage 1,000 employees, a $350 million budget, respond to 82,000 residents, and do it without being compensated fairly. That's just, I just want you to hear from me, that's not something that I support. I very strongly feel like a 6% raise honors those employees to get them as close as we can with a very small increase to our average resident. Does that stink? Yes. But is it something we have to do? Yes. We have to take care of our employees who then turn around and take care of our 82,000 residents. That's just what we have to do. So, I, this is the budget as presented. It is what we will vote on. You vote yes or no, whatever you are inclined to do and what you feel is right for. to do and what you feel is right for your constituents. I feel very strongly that this is what we have to do this year. We do an annual budget because those things will change every year. So we can't ask Rollin to say that next year we won't be talking about this again. And we might. Everything changes. That's why we have to do an annual budget. And it's our job to make the hard decisions so that we are supporting those employees and sharing as fairly as we can with others. It does stink. I'd love to be a mayor that never raised property taxes. And I realize that's a black eye when you go out there everywhere, but it's one that I'm willing to take because I really love and respect all of our city of Longview employees and appreciate the job that y'all do. So I just want you to know that you're valued. We're not talking about what you're paid because you do a very important job.
I just got to say, first off, I'm 100% behind the raises. And I know Rollin and I have visited and you say one cent's equal to about $840,000. And I would, you know, I don't know if this can be done. I'm new at this, but I'm telling you, I would challenge the directors in our departments, you know, hey, go back and look. Is there something that, hey, you know what, we bought it because we've used it every year. You know, it's something that we had, do we really need it this year? Because I would love it if we could walk out to our people when we walk out these doors and say, you know what, there is no property tax increase this year. Next year, now, that may not be the case because every year, the people, their value of their money goes down. We lose money. And I really want to see us give our people what they deserve, and they deserve more than what we're giving them. But right now, we can't without putting it on our taxpayers. We already know that some of our tax values are going to go up. You know, we're going to have some increase with our water and with our sewage. And, you know, that's just covering some of our costs. But I challenge, you know, I challenge you, Rollin, I challenge you, directors, go back and look, see if there's something that we can cut. You know, we're talking about $840,000 and we walk out and we make our taxpayers happy. We're excited. Our people that work for us are excited. And I would really like to see that. I mean, I understand there's challenges. I've worked through it. But when it comes to the day that they say, hey, you've got to cut this, kind of think of it as that day on behalf of the city of Longview. But I appreciate everything you've done. I just got to say that because the people I've talked to, some, they said, I understand, we got to raise our taxes to get to this point. I've got others saying, man, I can't afford my prescriptions now. And then you're going to hit me with water and sewage as well. And somehow or another, we've got to be able to work through this. So I'm asking you, go back and look, look and see if we can find something to make this a break even year and honor our employees with 6% raise across the board.
I know. Rollin, would you mind to speak a little bit just to the budget process? I mean, your original presentation included that directors had cut out, I think it was 1.6 million.
$1.8 million. That was the charge given to them at the beginning of this. As I've stated before, and I will state this again, there is nobody in this room that is happy about bringing you a tax rate increase. You can look across at every one of the employees that work here. You can look at the people that, the budget team that are at the desk. You can look at me. I will tell you, nobody wanted to bring this. What I will tell you though, is that we started from the beginning with the budget process. I told the directors, come in with four, seven, and 10% cuts. Every one of them came in with four, seven, and 10% cuts. I think I recognized it during the initial presentation of the budget. One manager said, you'll have to cut my position if you, if you, if you want me to cut the 10%. And that's a reduction in efficiency in services that they, an already lean department could not do without a manager. I challenge any of you to, don't take my word for it. Ask any of the directors that are in there. Ask if they left something on the table that didn't affect service. They told me they didn't. And they told me and the budget team that we took everything that couldn't. Could you do draconian things and not buy vehicles for a year and take the wear and tear on vehicles? Yes. What I will tell you is it drives you further behind and the hill becomes large, higher in the next budget process. The other thing that I will tell you is that I understand the perception of tax rates and what they are. I am a rate payer. I am a taxpayer here. I pay those same rates. I will tell you this, that the rules of the game as far as valuations and taxes and tax rates have changed in the last eight years. I've alluded to this repetitively during the previous four years. The goalpost has been moved by the state legislature for municipalities and counties as well as school districts. And many of you up here are familiar with how the goalposts have moved on school districts. I will tell you that they're still funding portions of those services, but have pushed a lot of those costs onto the localized rate payers. That has happened at the state level. It continues to happen at the state level. And that is why we're here tonight. It is not, I assure you, I have been through budgets. I will tell you, this one was absolutely one of the easiest budgets because when they came in with cuts, every one of them had four, seven, and 10. We reduced positions. We reduced vehicles. We reduced expenses. We reduced everything that they said would not affect their service. Now, if there's something out there beyond that, I can't find it. I could not find it. And, and the directors kept it from me. But I will tell you, that is not the team of people that we have leading this city. And that is not why we're in the position we're in.
No, I appreciate it. You and I have had this conversation.
Yes, sir, we have.
I've challenged it. The only way I can say it that people may, may not understand out here is, you know, your vehicles, you can't, you can't go without steady keeping in line of what you're doing. It's like buying helmets for a football team. If you wait and buy 100 helmets and you buy them every 10 years, it's going to hit you in the year when you ain't got money. And the thing about it is they're not going to be certifiable. You've got to keep up to that all the way through. I don't want us to cut services, but I was just asking.
Sure.
If there's a place that somebody knows, hey, let's see what we can do. Let's see if we can give it to the taxpayers of Longview, no tax increase, and at the same time, turn around and smile and tell our employees, we got you 6%.
Would you mind, Richard, would you pull up the slide with the tax rates? They have bar graph, might have been three.
Matchstick chart.
Yep, thank you. There's a name that I don't know. I think this is an important distinction that Rollin mentioned. But so our tax rate at 57.89 is voter approved. So that's from the bond. Voters approved us having a tax rate of 57.89. And what we would be talking about with the one cent increase is less than that.
Right.
So voters are willing, and voted so in a public election, to pay that in taxes, to receive the services, the bond election that we had, all of those things. This is not a rate that goes above what voters are familiar with and publicly supported in a prior election. I think that's a very good distinction. Thank you for making that earlier.
No, and I appreciate that. It's just.
Yeah, I understand. I understand the principle.
Want to have a cake and eat it too.
I understand.
So.
I do as well, sir.
And I just want to make sure that we understand that this is not saying that we don't value the admin, that, because that is not at all what we're saying. We're just trying to make sure that we make the best decision for all citizens. And that's just it. I mean, we want to look at every avenue. Every question that we ask is so that we can get to the right thing as a council and the mayor. So we're never not valuing any of our employees. We value our employees from the top to the bottom.
Good.
And again, we got a lot of employees in here for the city of Longview. Anybody that's listening for the city of Longview, we want you guys to be compensated. We value and do appreciate you. It's just, we have made, and I appreciate the diligence that's happened here. But we did talk about in the work session, we moved from 6.5 with $500 to 6% and 1,000. And how many employees do we have in the city of Longview?
We have 94 employees.
So, and then we look at, with the $1,000, aside from the 6%, we just mentioned a cent, one cent is about $840,000, correct?
Yes, sir.
So I'm just think, again, not, not taking away and not trying to look at other services. I think we're basically, how do we compensate everybody fairly for this session if there's a way to do it and still not ask taxpayers that are already increasing fees for other things? Then that's all we're asking. I mean, we're, we want, like Mr. Barial said, I mean, the best of both worlds here. Let's try to do it. And I'm not, I know that you guys are trying to do this because I see what's happened here and through all your thought process, and we appreciate that.
True.
Yeah, I think the benefit of the $1,000, you correct me if I'm wrong, is that for our lower wage earners, it makes their increase more like 9%. So like, the benefit of the flat 1,000 is, it doesn't hit our higher wage individuals at a percentage, but at our lower wage earners, the point of the flat is to give them a much higher percentage increase. So I'd hate to, I mean, I understand that's the reason that that's included that way.
Just want to say again, city employees, we want you here. We want you to stay here. We want to take care of you. That's, that raise, we know something's needed. The discussion is the percentages and how it looks. That's it. And doing it where we don't affect the 80-something thousand people that are paying property taxes and fees. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys, for the discussion. We, before we move on to items of community interest, we do need a motion to excuse John and Sydney. If somebody would make that, please.
I make the motion that we excuse Mr. Allen and Mr. Nustad.
Thank you.
And I'll make the second with the preference that I did take a shower tonight before I come. So I don't know, but I do second.
Is this your first service, taking a shower?
First time?
No, no.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Our members are excused. Thank you so much. We'll do items of community interest, starting with Mr. Conley.
Just want to say, parents, it's about to be time to send your kids back to school. I know schools are a pine tree, ISD, just driving by and seeing that. It's amazing when you, people that aren't education, you see parking lots are full of teachers preparing classrooms. And so we have some dates coming up, meet the teacher night for the little kids, pre-K and kindergarten would be August 6th. And then the, say Birch Elementary and High School, August 11th, August 7th, the middle school and junior high, and then Parkway Elementary, August 12th. Just encourage relationships between parents, if you can in any way be there. And normally, what I've experienced is the better participation you're going to have, the better experience your kid's going to have. So the more student engagement, just encourage you guys to be there and reach out to those principals and let them know you want to, you want to meet their teachers and have that type of communication. That's what helps our kids. And thank you for, thank you for the time.
Thank you. Ms. Moore?
Ray's going to take it for me.
Sorry. On behalf of Ms. Moore, I will be reading her, her flyer. I will be the voice, she'll be the body, demonstrating all the action and excitement.
I'm so excited. I just want my voice to crack.
There she goes. So when her hands go up, that's excitement. All right. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of District 2 and Ms. Moore here, we'd like for everyone to join us as we kick off construction of the new Stamper Pool. On behalf of Ms. Moore, Stamper Pool groundbreaking ceremony, 9:00 AM, August 5th, 2025, 400 Fair Street, Longview, Texas. And zip is 75601. It says one here. For everyone with like more information, go to longviewtexas.gov/stamperpool. And please come out and enjoy the groundbreaking ceremony.
Look at the graphics. John Albert's great designs. Everybody just want to jump in that pool. Let's fly. I mean, good job.
Yes, it is. Nice. Just jump in there. Can I jump in?
Please.
And so, just so everybody knows, we signed the Stamper Park contract. So anyway, just, that happened today before the meeting, so.
Good job. Do you have anything else?
No, ma'am.
Oh, you're going on, sorry.
No, that's it for D2.
All right, you got your own?
Yes, I do. On behalf of District 3, I wanted to take a minute to highlight our continued efforts to discourage celebratory gunfire in the city of Longview. As you know, we kicked off this initiative in earnest on New Year's Eve and have continued our education campaign prior to each major holiday. As you can see from the graphic up above, we had a significant reduction in calls for service of gunshots heard this year from 2024, with calls on July 4th specifically falling more than 80%. And that was a big drop. I am grateful to the Longview Police Department, and that's Officer Ladarian Brown, Michaela Vaughn, Officer Casey Naito, and our communications team for their support of this initiative. It's really making a difference. So congratulations, everyone. I don't know if everyone could really see the big difference in New Year's or July 4th, the gunfire that normally happens every year. An 82% decrease is huge. And those who live in District 2 and District 3 really thank you a whole lot. Yes.
Sounds like something you should get a trophy for, you know?
I did get a trophy. We like other trophies, so.
Good job. Thank you for bringing that, Mr. Wade. We appreciate you. Go ahead, Mr. Barial.
Martin House. Did we get the Martin? Okay. I guess we didn't get it. That's, that's all right. One of the things, had the opportunity to attend this last week was the Martin House, kind of going public with their fundraising, trying to finish out. They had set a goal of 6.2 million. Anybody that's not familiar with the Martin House, it's to benefit children who's been abused. And it's not just in Gregg County alone, but it's Gregg, Upsher, and Marion, Harrison County. And I'm telling you, it's a great thing. And they've kind of, their fundraising has been kind of kept on the lowdown, so to speak. But they had an announcement the other day. They were at $5.6 million of their $6.2 million goal, which is very obtainable. We got to see some pictures of, images of it. And I'll come back and have this on as well. That way you can hit the QR code and be able to see what they're doing. But it's great things and it's a, when you talk about communities coming together, it's communities across East Texas, and it benefits our Longview children just as much as it does anybody that's sitting in another county. So that's something to support. Again, I want to thank the people of Spring Hill coming out tonight and showing the representation that they did for Garrett Medman and his young men. Those things, there's a lot of people who coached their tails off their whole career and never get that opportunity. And Longview, we've been blessed with the Lobo championship. We've been blessed with Spring Hill. I'm waiting on Pine Tree to come on. Believe me, I've worked on it for a while. So, but congratulations to them. And man, it's just great to be with y'all.
Yep, thank you.
Good to be here. Anything, Mr. McPhee?
No.
Nope. Talked enough?
Yes, I've talked enough.
I have a couple tonight. I would like to thank everybody that's here. We love to have a full chamber, love to have you engaged. So thank you for being here and thank you for participating. Healthy View is wrapping up its first month, and those participating will have the opportunity to submit their progress for a chance to win monthly prizes. So get out there and be active. Check out some of our classes that you can sign up for. Learn more and be involved at longviewtexas.gov/healthyview. Dog Days of Summer is coming up. Celebrate the end of the '25 Longview swim season with Parks and Rec and the Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center at Dog Days of Summer, held Saturday, August 2nd at Ingram Pool. That's always a really good time. City council meetings, just a reminder that our council schedule is a little different in the upcoming month. So in August, we do have a special meeting on Tuesday, August 5th, and you can see all those dates here. And lastly, we want to invite you to come out and meet Chief Grimes. He's sitting right up here. If you happen to be in the room, we would like to say hi before you leave. But we are inviting the community to come out on Thursday, July 31st, that's next week, at the Fire Training Center for a Meet the Chief event to meet our new Chief Grimes. We're excited to welcome him and hear his plans for the department. So thank you, Chief Grimes, for doing that. We're glad to have you. And with that, we are adjourned.